Good morning. I'd like to call to order the joint committee hearing with the committees on housing and the committee on water and land. Today is Thursday, March 14th. It's 9:38 and we're in room 430. We have a single bill on our agenda, SB 2018 related to housing. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Only one person indicated they want to testify this morning, Janine Ota, Aina Heina Community Association on Zoom.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Jeannie Ota. I'm president of the Aina Heina Community Association. I'm testifying today in opposition to Senate Bill 2018. Our opposition is based on our experience in Wailepe Valley where recently we were able to place 9.5 acres into preservation, which joined 85 acres already placed in preservation as the Wailepe Nature Preserve. Another thousand acres in 2012 was placed into watershed. You know, when we do this work, we consider placing property from residential to preservation as actually upzoning because it defines what is valuable to us and what needs to be kept as resources. So I'm here today to testify because what I think this measure does not answer is that our zoning was made 70 years ago, perhaps even 50 years ago, when we did not know about soil and rockfall instability on our slopes and our valleys. Just in Wailepe Valley alone, taxpayers had to compensate homeowners on Mona, Leighton, Iluna, and Pema streets because their homes slipped off their foundations. These are on the slopes of the valley where there's unstable soil. And what I think what needs to happen is an understanding that these properties should never have been placed in residential zoning in the first place because they were unsafe to build homes. And there's also other considerations for zoning, for rezoning, and that is that sometimes the properties have access to a preserve like in this property that I spoke about. There may be ancient cultural sites. There may be well-established trails for the public. There may be critical habitat for endangered species. And in our case, the property that was placed in preservation was also adjacent to the Wailepe Stream and was part of our flood mitigation plan. So this bill would make it more difficult for us to do that. It would be more difficult to protect potential homeowners from dangerously built properties. And please understand that when a developer develops property up slope from homes and causes hydrology changes, that means homes nearby may suffer from slippage as well. So thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm asking you to please oppose this measure.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to testify on this matter? SB 2018. Chair seeing none.
Members, questions for Ms. Ota? All right, seeing none, we can go straight into decision making. So I am going to recommend that we defer this bill. I philosophically am supportive of ensuring that the counties are not reducing the amount of zone capacity for housing, which this bill would achieve. But at the same time, I want to recognize the testimony of Ms. Ota here and the Department of Planning and Permitting for Honolulu, which really clearly recognizes the need for the counties to have flexibility to downzone along the coast for sea level rise, also for the reasons Ms. Ota recognized for, you know, open space preservation, et cetera. And I am wary about impeding that authority too much. So I will recommend deferring this bill.
Thank you, Chair Eveslin. We concur.
All right, seeing no further business, this hearing is now adjourned.
Do you need to count us down or can we keep going?
Okay, we are calling to order the joint committee meeting between Committee on Water and Land and Committee on Housing. It's Thursday, March 14th, 2024, on our 9:31 a.m. agenda and conference room 430 at the State Capitol. We'll get started. We have one measure on our agenda, SB 2836, SD 2. First is Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation on Zoom.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. Chris Woodruff for HHFDC. I do apologize for not appearing in person, but our monthly board meeting is occurring at this time. In any case, we stand on our written testimony and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we also have Cynthia Nyris on Zoom from HHFDC?
Cynthia is with me, so no need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good morning. Katia Balasiany for OPSD. We stand in support of this measure and stand on our testimony.
Thank you. Hawaii Public Housing Authority. Thank you. DHHL. Thank you. That's all. We have signed up. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. Okay, we'll go into decision-making.
Okay, members, so recommendation is to pass out Senate Bill 2836, Senate Draft 2 with amendments. On page eight, line 10, we're going to make the cultural advisor a voting member, which is what we did for the House version of this bill when we moved it out earlier. Technical non-substance of amendments and defect the date to the year 3000. Want to lend, members, any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 2836, SD 2 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganadin. Representative Hashem. Representative Mizuno. Representative Morikawa. Representative Takayama. Representative Souza is excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
How's the committee members? Same recognition, same recommendation, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB 2836 with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Kila. Representative Kitagawa. Representative Miyake. Representative Onishi. Representative Todd. Representative Matsumoto. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Aloha. Welcome to our Committee on Water, Land hearing. We are on our 10 AM agenda, it's Thursday, March 14th, 2024, in conference room 430 at the State Capitol. We will get started on our first item, SB 2951, SD 1. We have Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. In here, I'll call with DLNR. We'll stand on our testimony in support of this measure and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Wendy Gady. I'm with the Agribusiness Development Corp. And we stand in very strong support of this measure. We find it is core to the mission of ADC. It is core to Hawaii's goals of doubling their food production, that we keep the 5,900 acres that are actively being farmed in growing food for the community and for the state. Without the help of ADC stepping in, and we are stepping in, we are asking for money, we're asking for three full-time equivalents, and it is not a blind ask. It is based on us doing due diligence with the providers that are currently using the system, walking the ditch and asking them what needs to be done, where it needs to be done. We have an action plan to fulfill, but we're going to need money and three people to do it. And ultimately, we'll also be preserving the lands for DHHL for live production with their beneficiaries. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Department of Hawaiian Homeland. Thank you. Ulupono Initiative.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Micah Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We'd like to stand in our testimony in support of this measure. I think we just want to note, like, with all the various irrigation systems that we have around our state, you know, there is some monetary ask that it takes to really repair and maintain. A lot of strong, hard work that goes into this type of work. And when we step away from it, when we step away from systems and say we're done, or we no longer want to fund it, the idea of bringing water systems back online, no longer are in the millions or hundreds of thousands. We're talking billions of dollars to ever bring something back. So in this case, with the East Kauai irrigation system, it's really important that we we take over the system, have someone that's willing to take it on like the ADC, and continue to provide this water for our farmers as we look to continue our food security goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Morikawa. I'm Brian Miumo here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support. You did hear the companion, so we appreciate you hearing this bill. You heard the previous testifiers. I've got just one statement. No water, no agriculture. No agriculture, no food. We urge you to pass this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. East Kauai Water Users Cooperative. Okay, in support, not present. That's all. We have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, hearing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We will move on to SB 2814, SD 1, relating to water infrastructure. First is DLNR. Okay, next is Agrib- Okay, next is Agribusiness Development Corporation.
Wendy Gadyam, ADC, and we stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Ulupono Initiative.
Thank you, Chair. Ulupono stands in testimony in support.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The Hoi Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. Moving on to SB 3153, SD2, relating to dam, relating to the dam and a pertinence improvement or removal grant program. Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, member of the committee, Cardi Chang. On behalf of DLNR, we stand in strong support of this admin bill, and this bill is necessary to implement the provisions of Act 134 that was passed by the legislature last year to enable dam owners to obtain grants through the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you. The Hoi Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, hearing none. We will move, members, questions? Okay, no questions. We will move on to SB 3154, SD1, relating to regulation of archaeological activities. We have Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kamakana Ferrer. I'm the lead compliance specialist with Offices of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand on a written testimony in support of this measure. There's often very little recourse for developers when they don't follow through on mitigation commitments, which is really not fair if they get their project. And so we believe that this measure will definitely help SHPD with enforcement on that aspect. Be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. DLNR.
Hello, I'm Adam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Alan Downer, Administrator of the Status Tort Preservation Division. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support of this administration bill. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ke'omailani Hanapi Hirata on Zoom.
Aloha,aina ka'olo. My name is Ke'omailani Hanapi Hirata. I come from the island of Molokai. I am testifying here today as a ke'okeaaina, Molokai, as a kupaaaina. I am in strong support of this bill. This bill, I feel, is long overdue. It is a step in the right direction. I did submit a written testimony last night. I did see that it was submitted late, so I wanted to make sure that I was here to share my support for this bill. And I hope you folks are all able to read what I wrote. But basically, on the island of Molokai, in one summary, we have open cases right now of archaeologists who come to our island. And basically, Mahaoe and Anaino are kupunas and are tutus who are here, including our artifacts. And they take them away from our island to be tested in facilities around the world in different universities, even right here in Hawaii, or even our universities here in Hawaii. And they're not held responsible or accountable for their lack of, you know, knowing the policies and the rules and the laws. And they don't even go to SHPD to get the proper, and go through the proper process yet. But it's created turmoil within our island's community because we have to carry the burden when our artifacts and our kupunas are having to be returned. And then we have to ask for them to bring them back. So it's like they come here, they do their research. Nobody knows about it unless somebody, you know, brings it to light in our small island's community. And when we call them out on it, they create ignorance. And we cannot allow that to happen anymore. And I appreciate the people who drafted this bill and put them together, and mahalo for allowing me to testify here today. Oi ho.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up to testify. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to SB 2156, SD2, relating to port infrastructure. DLNR.
Good morning, Chair, Tiama, Vice Chair, poi poi, Representative Morikawa. The department stands in strong support of this measure.
Thank you. Clayton Kubal on Zoom. Okay, not present. That's all we have signed up. Anybody else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? I have a quick question. Relating to dredging, I know that the Army Corps of Engineers does dredging in harbors. Does this overlap with that, or does this apply to areas that they don't cover?
They have federal jurisdiction over entrance channels and such, so they will take care of those areas. And then the other areas that are under state jurisdiction, we will take care of. And we do have the opportunity to work with them in certain situations, such as Haleeva Harbor, that we're teaming up on a project there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, members, any more questions? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to SB 2721, relating to ocean recreation. DLNR.
Good morning again. The department stands in support of this measure.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to SB 2501, SD1, relating to Hawaii Invasive Species Council. We have no one signed up to testify. Is there anyone wishing to provide testimony? Okay, seeing none. No one to ask questions of. So we will move on to SB 2546, SD1, relating to hunting guides. DLNR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jason Omick with Department of Land and Natural Resources, and we support this bill and offer comments. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Hawaii Cattlemen's Council on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, Tiama, Vice Chair, poi poi, members of the committee. I'm Nicole Galassi on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We support this measure, and the reason is because it's really important for people to be aware of who is on their land and to be able to get permission for that. We think that the written permission is really simple. If you see our testimony, you'll see that we're asking that all hunters should be asking for written permission. This could be as simple as a text message. And it's a matter of respect and also a matter of safety. So thank you for hearing this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hoi Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. We absolutely support this measure. We think it's a simple request. This is in no way agriculture against hunters. In fact, we work with the hunters. It is a simple request that when they do come onto private lands, ranch lands are big, farmlands are big. We just want to know who's on there. We just want simple permission. Sometimes they do come with their animals, and also they're coming with weapons. We saw what just happened in Wainai with the rancher. We want to prevent things like that. So again, we support our hunters and their ability and their right to hunt. We just want them to make sure, especially these hunting guides, which this bill is addressing, that they get the permission from the landowners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to our last item, SB 1258, SD2, relating to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. DLNR.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Kurt Cottrell, Administrator for Division of State Parks. You have our written testimony providing comments, and I wanted to point out that, should the bill have legs, we've offered some revisions to make it more clear as to what we're already doing. But I was just out on the West Side yesterday with lineal descendants and cultural practitioners. So we're already engaged in the process that the bill is requesting us to do. And in fact, I put the CIP that we got that's helping us fund the community outreach as we prepare for planning and some re-improvements of comfort stations and our walkways and parking ways out there. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Okay, members, questions? Okay, no questions. We will recess for decision-making. We are back for decision-making. The first item, SB 2951, SD1. The recommendation is to defect the date to the year 3000, blank the appropriation, and add it to the committee report, and add...
Oh, blank the FTEs.
Oh, blank the FTEs as well, and add it to the committee report. Members, any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, members, voting on Senate Bill 2951, Senate Draft 1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Rep. Chun?
Aye.
Rep. Ganyadan?
Aye.
Rep. Hashem?
Aye.
Rep. Mizuno?
Aye.
Rep. Maikawa?
Aye.
Rep. Takayama?
Aye.
Rep. Sousa's excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next item is SB 2814, SD1. Recommendation is to defect the date to the year 3000 on page two, lines 13 and 17. We're going to add an agriculture infrastructure study. We're going to add the amount $3 million into the committee report. We're going to make the study due to the legislature on November 1, 2026. Any questions or comments? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 2814, Senate Draft 1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. For S... Next is SB 3153, SD2. Recommendation is to defect the date to the year 3000, blank the amount, and add it to the committee report, and make technical non-substantive amendments. Any comments or questions? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Okay, members, voting on Senate Bill 3153, Senate Draft 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any... Noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next is SB 3154, SD1. Recommendation is to defect the date to the year 3000. And that's all. Any comments, concerns? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 3154, Senate Draft 1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next is SB 2156, SD2. Recommendation is to defect the date. Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 2156, Senate Draft 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next is SB 2721, SD2. Recommendation is to defect the date and take the DLNR amendments. Any comments or questions? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 2721, Senate Draft 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. SB 2501, SD1. We're going to defer. And next is SB 2546, SD1. Recommendation is to defect the date. And any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 2546, Senate Draft 1. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Finally, SB 1258, SD2. Defect the date to the year 3000, take the DLNR amendments, and make technical non-substantive amendments. Any comments or questions? Okay, Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 1258, Senate Draft 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting Rep. Sousa excused. Any reservations or noes? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. We are adjourned.